Hello, welcome to the Greater Lafayette Indivisible County Council Virtual Town Hall. With us, we have five of our candidates. Before I introduce them, I want to just talk about how this will go. First off, my name is Matt Geyer. I'll be the moderator and tech person running this whole show. So hopefully it goes smoothly. Sorry, we're a little late. We did have tech difficulties, as you always do. First, I want to thank all the candidates for coming and thanks for taking time out of your day to make sure that people can know the issues about this important election. The format will be about two minutes for each question. If I ask follow-up, it'll be about a minute. And we'll give all the candidates time to do their intros and their closing statements, also about two minutes. We're going to be pretty hard on that just because we want to make sure that we have enough time for everyone's questions in the chat. So the way, we want to make sure that you get your questions answered. And so what we're going to do is in the Facebook chat right now, we'll have you ask your questions. And then for any questions that you see that maybe you wanted to ask, or you think, oh, that's a great question, I want you to give a thumbs up and like that question. We have somebody monitoring the chat right now, so we can rank these questions so we don't, or we make sure that the most important questions are answered. The questions with the most likes are going to get pushed to the top in our ranking system and make sure that those questions are asked, especially, you know, within reason. Hopefully, we're not going to get anybody in here, you know, trashing the chat. Aside from that, we'll get to the intros. By the way, if those questions, we're going to ask that at the second half, there'll be a brief intro where we'll talk about some of the stuff going on with Greater Lafayette Indivisible and some of our partner organizations. But our intros, let's start it out with, let's say Susan Schechter. We'll just go in the original order that I have up on the screen for now. Sorry, Susan, I can't hear you, you're still muted.
Okay, hi, hi, I was muted. I'm Susan Schechter. And first of all, I want to thank you, Matt, you're going above and beyond, but also Indivisible for holding this forum and for filling the void after the 2016 election that gave me some hope. Indivisible's call to service was a final push for me to file for the seat on the council. Before that, about a year ago, you might all recall when the county banned wind farms in Tippecanoe County. At the commissioners' meeting where they voted unanimously to pass the ban, I asked, "Why would we choose to be dependent on expensive polluting coal to support our coal energy, to support our economy, and ban local production of inexpensive clean energy? I'm still looking for an answer." "We need to break our fossil fuel addiction, governments, businesses, individuals, we all need to work together. I've slashed greenhouse gas emissions from my personal and business activities. Clean energy pays back many times over, freeing funds for other priorities. Since investing in rooftop solar, my electric bill is a $9 monthly connection fee. I'm running for council to help the county make better decisions." "County Council controls the budget. Our spending should reflect our values, a safe, diverse, and resilient community. As a council member, I will pursue targeted spending with measurable outcomes to achieve community priorities. The council will face budget challenges. COVID-19 is an immediate threat. Pandemics were predicted and we were underprepared. We'll be dealing with the impacts for years. Likewise, climate change has been predicted and we are underprepared. We will deal with its impacts for decades. Even as we respond to these crises, we must wisely manage county services to maintain a safe, equitable, and vibrant community. There are other topics I hope we can speak to this evening: criminal justice reform, recreational resources, and historic preservation. Thank you."
Thanks, Susan. Let's go with Monica.
Hi, I'm Monica Casanova. Currently, I'm the Assistant Director at Lums Immigration Clinic, and I also teach ESL at the Learning Network in Frankfurt, Indiana. I've lived in this county since 1993. I'm a Purdue grad and I'm running for council to ensure that the county, that the county council is representative of the community it serves.
Thanks, Monica. Anhel?
Hi, I'm Anhel Valentin. I am currently one of the, I'm working with the Wesley Foundation on campus. It's a campus ministry. And I decided to run for office following the move, the desire to expand the jail and how that, there was a lot of people pushing for that. I think that criminal justice reform is one of the big issues of our generation, not the only one, obviously. Climate change is just overarching when it comes to everything that the world is facing right now, and we're no exception. I think that there's a lot of issues that are going to be important and that are important that the county will face in the coming years. And I want to make sure that our county is looking and moving in a more progressive direction to address those issues. I think that where we put our money reflects our values and we want to make sure that our spending as a county creates a better future for people in our community. So that's why I decided to run. But I'm also really interested in seeing a council that is more representative of our community. So similar to Monica and Robbie, I think that we need Latino representation in our county. And we are currently sitting at around 10% of the population, but zero representation. So I want to make sure that we are moving in a direction that our county looks, our county government looks like the community that it wants to represent. Because if we are not, like, addressing the issues that our community is facing, then our county government isn't representing us. And we want to make sure that, I want to make sure that we're moving in that direction. So that's what I decided to run.
Thanks, Anhel. Let's go with Brian.
Hey, my name is Brian Hall. And I have lived in Lafayette since 2004, when I married my wife. She is, at the time, she was getting her master's at Purdue. Now she is a department head at Purdue in the School of Communications. I have taught in elementary school since 2004, in Tawney Elementary, which is out in the southern, southern part of the county. As a, what was I going to say? As a, being in a county school, I see a lot of the county issues that come up during the, in the county council, that county council will handle and deal with. And when the open seats were brought to my attention, I definitely, you know, found it interesting. And as a teacher, I'm used to working with, with large, with people of all different, different areas on what, on to solve, to solve problems. And as a member of the county council, I look forward to talking with not only the council members that I agree with and get along with, but also maybe some of the council members that we might differ at some time, but we, you need to sit down and come with some agreement on that. And as a teacher of 16 years now, I have found that both with administrators, parents. So that is why I am running for county council.
Thanks, Brian. And Margaret.
Hi, everybody. My name is Margaret Haas, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm a boomerang in Tippecanoe County, so I grew up here, graduated from Jeff, but I moved away and lived in different places. I came back about four years ago, in the spring of 2016, and at a very crucial point in our country's history. I came back because I believe in the community, and I immediately got involved. I became part of the League of Women Voters and also the Greater Lafayette Immigrant Allies. Three principles I think are really important that would guide me are accountability, community, and transparency. So when I talk about accountability, I'm thinking about not only holding other elements of county government accountable for their spending, but also holding ourselves as county counselors accountable to all residents of the county, not just the property taxpayers, not just the citizens, but everyone who lives here. And when I talk about community, I mean a compassionate, inclusive community that is welcoming not only to immigrants, but other newcomers to the community, that prioritizes harm reduction over incarceration. And we're going to see that a lot, you know, in the coming, coming weeks and months in the pandemic, that mental health is going to be a crucial, a crucial thing to pay attention to. We already had a problem with jail overcrowding, and we're, we have to make sure that we're protecting the people who are in the community. And we do that also through coalition building. So I'm very grateful to be part of coalitions and to have worked with many organizations across the community to, to make change and bring Tippecanoe County in a progressive direction. Finally, transparency means reducing barriers to participation, whether that's accessibility, whether it's, you know, just knowing what county government is and how it works and getting an explanation for the decisions that we make. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So we'll just get, those are great introductions. Let's get right into the questions. So our first question is, "What do you think the county council is doing well? And then, within that, what would you like them to do differently?" I think this question speaks to a lot, especially because I don't think everybody knows exactly how the county council works or what it does. And so I think this, this really reaches into that. So we're going to bounce around here in terms of who we call on. It'll be random, just to give everybody a chance to go first, last, and not everybody in the same order. So let's start with Brian.
Okay. Some of the things that I've noticed since 2018 that the county has done a much better job is with communication, a little bit of transparency, because now they, even though the, the council meets at, in the morning, the weekday, they are now recording it and putting that on YouTube, so everybody can have the chance to go through and watch it on their own time. So that is a big improvement since 2018. What I would like to see is the, the time be adjusted where it might be like a 6:00, 6:00 PM to allow more people to, would be able to, to attend the meetings, actually see what, what goes on, you know, firsthand while it's going live. Because they have it on Facebook now, and like I said, they record it for YouTube, but it's still during the weekday mornings where the majority of the people are working and cannot attend, even if they want to attend. So that's one thing that I would really like to see improved. And if, I believe most of the Democrats are on board with that, so if Democrats have the voting majority in the council, I believe we can adjust that time and make it so it's more, it's easier for people to be, you know, be a part of the meetings and ask questions there in, you know, in person.
Thanks, Brian. Monica?
Hey, thanks, Matt, for the question. I think that's a great question. I think what the county council is doing well, when I look at their, our finances, we're very fiscally responsible. I would say maybe a little overly cautious. We do have $6 million in rainy day funds, which is great, but you also have to have a plan for what those funds are going to be used for ultimately. And then I think the things that the council could, could improve on, like Brian said, accessibility. So if you're a working mom or just working nine-to-five, there's no way that you can make it to a Tuesday morning county council meeting. It's just very difficult for working people to, to participate in our local government. And that, that should change. I do think that having the county council meetings available on YouTube is a big step forward. I do have to say that the quality is kind of sketchy when I, when I've seen the videos. I mean, oftentimes, there's no audio, and there's also no other options for other languages. So those are things that I would encourage the county council to, to improve on.
Thanks, Monica. Let's go with Margaret.
Yeah, I think this is a great question, and I would agree with Monica. You know, we've, we've sat in several county council meetings in the last few months, not recently, but before the pandemic. And on the surface, it seems like the county council has a great process in place. Things go very smoothly, apparently, but it's almost too smooth. Because it feels like there's nothing, it's more of a rubber stamp for the priorities that are set by the county commissioners or other people in the county. And it's not a proactive body that's really going out and talking to people and listening to what the concerns are in the community. And maybe we tend to think that the county council is a little boring because of budgeting, but I think it was Anhel, as we said earlier, you know, budgeting reflects your values and your priorities. So that's, the, the council really is accountable to the taxpayers and the residents of the county to, to make sure that those priorities are represented. And so I think that's what they really could do better. And as far as, you know, the YouTube, that was only because Alana Stonebreaker and, you know, other people, Lisa Dolam, on the council pushed for those changes. And they were also, you know, not that, thank goodness that they did it before this pandemic happened, because it would be even harder to do that. But I think they need to be better options for public comment, better languages, possibly captions for those who are hearing impaired, and, you know, all kinds of accessibility. And really just going out to the people and explaining what the county council is, what we do, and, and why the decisions we make are important.
Thanks. Let's go with Anhel.
All right, here I come. Sorry about that, I had to unmute myself. So one of the areas where I think that our county council has been doing well is in funding its specific, funding specific areas. I think I would echo as well what other people have said about accessibility, transparency, how it's improved, especially after Alana made it a center point of her campaign. It changed pretty quickly after that point. And then, but I think that two areas where we are funding our offices appropriately are the auditor's office. I met with the auditor for the county, Eric Grossman. And she, sorry, the county assessor, my bad, sorry, county assessor. Eric Grossman. And he, we were talking right about the capture rate when it comes to property taxes and whatnot. And, and I think that he's doing it, his office is doing a good job. So I'm pleased with the level of funding that the county is putting there, especially when you compare it to other counties. I do think that there are still areas for expansion when it comes to how much we can fund that, but I think that that's one area where we're doing well. The other big one is the public defender's office, because I think that we want to make sure that people that are going through criminal trials have access to quality defense. And seeing that it is fairly evenly matched and funding with a prosecutor's office is encouraging, because that's something that's really important for the future of people in our community. I do think that other areas, as Margaret mentioned, that we want to work towards is being more proactive as to where we put our funding in the first place, rather than rubber, rubber stamping it, setting, setting an agenda at the beginning as to where we put our money. Additionally, and I think that this is something that helps a lot of people in the community, if we want people in the community to give input, we want to make sure that the data is more accessible and easy to digest as to where the money is currently going.
Thanks, Anhel. And Susan?
Yeah, I do think transparency and community engagement builds support for government activities. The improved access to government meetings is one positive result of the COVID lockdown. We need to continue and improve on those online meetings to support community engagement. Questions have been, bought from the community haven't been coming in, and I think there's a reason for that, and we need to improve the ways that people can ask questions. I would like to see annual summaries of the county programs stating their goals and impacts, and that should be a condition for funding so that we can evaluate the programs. I would like to see the county budget available in a spreadsheet form to facilitate analysis. And I would also, I've been looking into process and, and kind of framework. So I think we're kind of in the county following an incremental budgeting paradigm versus what I think might be more fruitful is a priority-based budgeting. That involves listening sessions and really engaging the public in setting priorities, and then the budgeting would flow from that.
Thank you. All right, I heard a few of you mention this, so this is going to be a good follow-up, I think, to that first question, and is, what should the county's budget priorities be? And then, what was your process for determining that priority? And we will start with Anhel.
I think that one of the areas where we need to prioritize more is when it comes to criminal justice reform. I do think it has been growing in recent years, but one concern is, right, that we haven't been putting money when it comes into mental health care and addiction treatment. I think that as we move forward, going into spending the public safety tax, we have to really keep an eye as to how we're going to actually improve the outcome of people. Because right now, the, related to criminal justice, right, it's about 27% of the budget in addition to prosecutor's office and defender's office as well. So we want to make sure that we're actually putting in the money where it needs to be going. And if we are not putting money proactively into the situation, then we're not going to be able to keep those numbers lower as to how we're spending in the future. Because if it keeps continuing to grill with the county, then I think that we, we need to be doing something better. So I think that that would be my biggest priority is when it comes to mental health care access and, and trying to increase addiction treatment availability, both for people that are in jail, but also those that have brushes with the criminal justice system, and members of the community who need it. Because we don't want to wait until people have been affected by the criminal justice system to give them access to sort of needed services.
Thanks. Susan?
Well, I know what I think priorities are, and, and I've spoken to that already. I agree with Anhel that criminal justice being a huge part of our, our budget, over 50% of the general fund, that that money needs to be spent wisely. We're, we're locking people up who haven't yet had trials. That seems, for anybody who's, who's not a violent person, why are they in jail? That's costing us money and it's destroying their, their employment and family relations. I've, I've been a victim of crime, and I understand the reflexive call for incarceration, but I think investing in prevention, treatment, and rehabilitation can be more effective. But that's, that's my, again, priority. I do think that we need to engage the public in determining what priorities are and do that in a structured fashion. You know, if you just send out a survey and say, "What are your top three priorities?", you know, people will say criminal justice. Well, does that mean they want to spend more on criminal justice? I don't know that that's, that's how you determine that. I think you, you really need to, maybe for all the people that, that think criminal justice is the highest priority, to get them together in a focus group, and this could be done with, you know, facilitators and say, "Well, really, what is it that, that we should be spending our money on?" And, and have a guided discussion of that. So, so I think priority, setting priorities is a community function.
Thanks, Susan. Margaret?
Yeah, sure. I think, yeah, criminal justice is definitely a priority. As I said, jail overcrowding was a problem before the pandemic, and it's even more important that we, we try to, you know, keep people out of jail as much as possible. And also, when people are exiting the criminal justice system, you know, give them the, the tools to reintegrate. And that includes, you know, registering to vote, because a lot of people don't know that even if you've been incarcerated in Indiana, you can still have, you still have your right to vote as soon as you're released. You know, and of the way that we, we, that I learned that was through deep canvassing, right? It was going with the work of the Hoover's Vote Coalition, meeting different people who said, "Oh, I didn't realize that I, you know, I don't, I don't think I can vote because I was, I was in prison." They said, "No, actually, you can." And so I think that's an example of a process that is really going out into the community and listening to people. And having listening sessions is also a big part of that. And building a coalition, again, with different groups that are, that represent different segments of the community, whether that's different socioeconomic statuses, different ethnicities, different groups, special interest groups within the community. I think that's really important. One priority we haven't talked about those elections, and that's a huge function of the county government, is administering our elections. And we have to think about voting machines, because those are going to be bought probably this year for the next, or next year. And so that, that is a huge priority. And we have to make sure that we're, we're making our elections as safe and, and accessible as possible to people in the pandemic and beyond.
Thanks. Brian?
Um, yes. My number one, when you first brought up this question idea was, uh, no, I'm totally blanking on words. With the money that is from the safety fund that's going to, it might go to a bigger jail, it might go other places, we need to look at what, what it's going to do and not just talk to one or two people. As a teacher, I see year, every year, I have parents in my school, in my classroom, that are either recently out of jail or midway through, they're in jail, and the student is living with grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle. And when they're released, chances are, they're going to wind up back in jail. There's nothing in between to help them go from what they, whatever they did to wind up in jail, to help them find a way back into regular, normal society and be, you know, a member of it. Too often, they get bailed out, released, and then they just fall back into that. And I see, as a teacher, I see what happens with the kids. And it is hurtful when I, when I have students that have been to three or four different schools, and I teach, you know, nine, 10, 11-year-olds. I mean, they're just getting shuffled around from house to house, and the parents are having to move here or there. It, there's nothing set up to kind of help inmates transition back into a society, to help them find a job. So I think a lot of the money, rather than looking at, putting that money towards bigger jails, should be some kind of counseling to help them, to help out, to help out those citizens, rather than just, okay, you served your, let's just say, six months, a year sentence, release, and then we'll see you again. Also, with-
Sorry, Brian.
I'm, gotcha.
Thank you, thank you. And then Monica?
I thought I missed my turn. I would say, as far as who gets to decide who the, what the priorities are, I think we still have to rely on the department heads for the county and rely on their expertise, because they know what they're talking about, they know how their departments are functioning and what's needed. But I would also reiterate what some of the other candidates have said, which is that we also need engagement from the residents of this community. But I think to, to get that participation, there has to be some grassroots education and try to get our residents to be engaged in our democracy. I think people hate ordinary people. I think people hate ordinary people, hate politics. They might not be as interested as to come to county council meetings or city council meetings because they don't think that it pertains to them or it's relevant to their daily lives. And that's just simply not true. But as far as priorities, public health is going to be a huge priority. I mean, recently, the public safety tax was approved and that's great. I think that's going to be needed to address the fallout from COVID-19. And then just day to day stuff that the county is responsible for. I think that's going to have to continue, like roads and infrastructure and amenities that make our community great, like funding the parks, libraries, that kind of thing.
Thank you. That is actually going to go well into our next question. And our next question is, would you have voted to increase or for the increase in the public safety tax? Why or why not? And if yes, how would you spend it? If no, how would you suggest we pay for the increasing costs from the addiction crisis? And since we put our last, last time, how about we'll start with Monica this time?
Putting me on the spot, Matt.
I figured it would go well from what the last answer.
Repeat, because it sounded like two questions.
Sure. Yeah, it's like a bifurcated question. Would you have voted for the increase in the public safety tax? Why or why not? And then if yes, how would you spend it today? And if no, how would you suggest we pay for the increasing costs from the addiction crisis?
Yeah, I would have voted yes. I think there was a lot of data presented and a lot of support presented by emergency service providers and our law enforcement about needing additional space. When you look at our police department, it's pretty tight there. We talked about overcrowding in jail. Now, necessarily want to fund enlarging the jail. I think we do need to invest in justice reform, criminal justice reform. But yes, I would have voted for it and I would allocate those funds for mental health, addiction. And definitely giving the law enforcement and emergency personnel the tools that they need and the staffing that they need.
Margaret?
Yeah, I agree. I think I would have voted for it as well. There's a lot of reasons for that. There's a lot of need within the jail, not just for space, but also for services. So, and I know this intimately, someone who was close to me was incarcerated for a few weeks. And just the lack of mental health services, counseling, any kind of way to deal with the trauma that had caused the offense in the first place. A lot of that was lacking. So we really need those funds for that kind of, those kinds of services and also investment in community corrections. But I would go back to Monica's point about public health. It's like, you can't have public safety without public health. And we're seeing that right now. There was a positive case in community corrections programs. So we need to invest in public health as well to address those public safety concerns. And it's part of a bigger picture, you know, mental health, addiction services before, in incarceration and after release. So we have to think about that bigger picture and spend the funds wisely.
Thank you. Susan?
I'm going to go with a qualified yes on that. I, having these decisions be binary as in yes or no, when there are so many shades of nuance. I do know that our fire department faces hazards with all the chemicals that are in homes and businesses. And if they aren't well trained, they're really put in a hazardous position. They need the equipment to fight those fires. I've seen, I live downtown where we have a very diverse population. And I've seen lots of situations where the police have had to do their jobs. And it's, they need good training to be able to keep cool heads. And they do a good job, but they do need support and training to do that. But I don't know that, for one thing, the council will only have control over one part of that, that tax, those tax funds that come in. And specifically for the jail. And I think we need to be really focused on, why are we using incarceration? What is the goal? Because I think it tends to be a punitive sentencing, rather than this is how we are going to improve the safety of the public. This is how we are going to help the, this person who has broken a law to lead a better life.
Thanks, Susan. Anhel?
Sure. So I guess I'll start and say that I would have voted yes for it. Similar to Susan, you know, like almost every vote, you know, is a qualified yes. You want it to be spent on specific things. And often, often cases, you know, you want, the bill isn't perfect. What you're voting on isn't perfect and it's about pushing it in the right direction, right? So I think there's a couple of issues that I think that we need to be spending it on. I think that at the risk of sounding like a broken record, in regards to other candidates, we need to be investing in mental health care, we need to be investing in addiction treatment. I think that that's something that is sorely needed. We need to make sure that first responders and correction officers are trauma trained and are trained to deal with mental health care issues. Because that's something that's really important in communities across the nation. You know, that's been something that we struggle with. And I don't think that we're an exception by any case, you know. And the only way that we work to prevent situations like that is by having the necessary treatment, training. So that's one area that I really want to make sure that we are strongly investing in. Additionally, also, like people on parole, for example, they don't have, they don't have access to funding to get like a public transit if they can't afford it. So that might be a very tiny portion of what we actually end up using it for. But it can make a huge difference in a parole, a person that's on parole, whether they end up breaking their parole because they can't make the meeting or because our city and our county is working towards it, they actually have the services that are necessary. So, you know, it really has to be all encompassing. And I guess I'll quote James on this, James Blanca, who's a West Lafayette City Councilman. He mentioned, you know, that one of the areas that often is misunderstood, that, you know, we want to increase funding for police departments. That can be seen as something of a dangerously bad. But when the police is overburdened, that's when they're more likely to make mistakes. If we have a police that's overburdened, then our community and especially minorities are more at risk. So we want to make sure that that's.
Thank you. Brian?
All right, yeah, just like everyone else, I would have voted yes on this. And obviously, I was not in the council during the vote, so I can't say, oh, only if this or that. But I believe these, it should go for, like pretty much everyone was saying, with help with addiction. If they, you know, are arrested and are addicted to some, to something, they need help, you know, staying off that and getting off that and staying off that. That would be one thing. And also, I mentioned it earlier, is the transition from being in jail into everyday life. There, I would hope some, I would want some of that safety tax money to go towards a program to help people who find themselves in jails once they get out to stay out of jail.
Thank you. So we do have more questions, but in the interest of everyone else's time, we're going to take this moment to switch over to the Facebook questions. We're going to give you some time. For anybody who hasn't joined us or joined us late, the questions that are in the chat, you can either ask one, or if you find one that you are interested in, give it a like. And we have someone working on it behind the scenes, making sure that the one with the most like is going to get pushed to the top, so we can ask that one. And we'll give you a little time because I'm going to take this opportunity to give a little update about what we're doing in Greater Lafayette, Indivisible, and with our partner organizations. So, let's talk about our Week of Action that we just, we're in the middle of. You're joining us for one of the events right now. This is a group effort between Greater Lafayette, Indivisible, and our partner organizations. And we have a whole week that we've been doing stuff. Today, Thursday, is the County Council Candidate Forum. Thank you for joining us on our Week of Action. This is, like I said, this is a coalition work. This is between Greater Lafayette, Indivisible, Greater Lafayette Immigrant Allies, Showing Up for Racial Justice, and the Younger Women's Task Force of Greater Lafayette. And it is, it's been a great coalition. We've been at it for a couple of years now. It's, I think it's improved, especially for Indivisible, it's improved our activist skills and we learned a whole lot and we're really glad to be a part of that. So what we did on Tuesday, people went out and actually handed out absentee ballots at food finders for people who were picking up food. And as you can see, it was a great event. We handed out 105 absentee ballots, pre-stamped, pre-printed. All they had to do was fill it out and send it in. And it was great. I think everyone, I think it was even on the news, WFI did something. It was fantastic. So if you are interested in doing stuff like this, please get in contact with any one of the organizations. We're going to be continuing to do stuff like that, trying to be safe during the pandemic and making sure that people's access to voting is not denied. So in that, I want to make a plea for applying for your absentee ballot. If you see here, we have a little animation. This video is on all our social media. This is, this video is on, I think, everybody else's social media too. It's a really great video just to show you how to apply online to get your absentee ballot. It's super easy. It takes like less than five minutes. I did it in less than five minutes. If you're able to and you're already registered, go online and fill that out and you should get your absentee ballot. And if, again, if you need help, this video right here is perfect. And the due date is May 21st. It's coming up really quickly. So if you want to vote for any of these candidates, make sure to get that in. This is the thing that nobody likes to do, but we're going to do it anyway. A lot of this stuff costs money and we are run by just small donations, mostly people who are a part of Indivisible. So if you like stuff like what we do, please help us do more stuff. Stamps cost money, printing costs. It's all things you don't really think about. Even the equipment to run this, it all costs money. So if you are able to, only if you're able to, please go to LafayetteIndivisible.com/donate and throw us a couple bucks. It really does help. All of our money goes directly to that. We have no administrative costs. It's all volunteer run. So that would be fantastic. Thank you. We do have a messaging class coming up, Tuesday, May 19th. It's really how to message as progressives. It's about framing, it's about how to effectively manage framing in a lot of what we do. And I think it's going to be really good, especially as we go forward. If any of these progressive policies that we're going to be pushing for, we have to know how to sell this. We have to know how to frame it against some of the negative attacks against it. So please, please come on by. It's going to be a discussion. It's going to be great. It's, if you look at the event on Facebook, shows you what we're going to be basing on, what to listen to, really short podcasts and stuff like that. So please come. And Friday, we have our virtual happy hour. We've been running it every Friday since the pandemic began. It's been great. We've had people from all over the place come in. I've been the one asking interesting questions, trying to, we've been learning about each other. It's been really great. And it's just a good way to unwind Fridays after work. This Friday, our happy hour is actually going to be helping one of the events for our Week of Action. And we're going to be making signs because on Saturday, we're going to be doing a little car parade downtown to help people know about absentee voting. I think it'll be really fun. Please, please come and join us. Message us for the Zoom link and be a part of it. So that's all I got for notes and we're going to go over to our Facebook questions that are hopefully done and asked away. So, our number one question so far, and I'll, let's see here. It's got four votes. It was asked by Sarah. How would you allocate funds to improve mental health and substance abuse treatment and accessibility? And we will start with Anhel.
I think one of the areas where we need to allocate funds when it comes to mental health treatment and accessibility is to actually having a community-like location where people can go and receive mental health if they need it in our community. That's something that we're sorely lacking. We really have, we have too few mental health professionals in our community for our number of people in our, even if you have a health insurance, you're going to struggle to find it. So we want to make sure that that's part of where we put money in that direction. Additionally, I think that we need to be putting money specifically when it comes to treatment. So instead of going through, when it comes to people that are arrested, prosecuted and whatnot, we can, instead of doing that, we can try to create more programs, that are diversion programs, for people to have access to mental health care and addiction treatment so that they can improve their quality of life and then they can reintegrate into our community. One thing that, in the conversation with Joe Mackey relatively recently, one thing that he was mentioning was that we, our mental, our addiction treatment, like the stay period is too short because it's a little bit shorter than what it takes people to stop, you know, feeling the actual addiction. So we want to make sure that we're allocating funding properly on that front because we want to make sure that it's effective, what we do. Because we really want to help people in our community. And it takes putting money in those areas and working with organizations in the community to how we do, we reintegrate people. Because mental health is something that is a continuing issue. And having a support group for people is really effective. So I know that there are organizations doing good work already. And I think that when we provide funding for programs that are working, we help our community grow better and we deepen partnerships with community organizations. I, that's where I would put the money.
Thanks. Margaret?
I think there are a lot of ways that we can do this. Some of these things are, you know, things that really the state should address. Issues with licensing, you know, allowing licenses for people who are licensed in other states, providing incentives to, for people to come to Indiana and to practice in our communities. But things we can do on a local level, as I said, increasing services in the jail. From what I had heard, there was not very much available. There was maybe one, a person who came once a week or a couple of times a week to do like a little Bible study, which is not the kind of, you know, rehabilitation that everyone is seeking. And in addition, you know, we've had really good work in the community, I think, on the opioid task force that has brought a lot of different organizations together and mental health care providers. And we need to look at that and continue to fund that and to expand it. And I think when we were talking about law enforcement, training, you know, having law enforcement understand how to deal with mental health is really important. But it's also, you know, having police and law enforcement accountable is also important. So we haven't talked a little bit, so much about police accountability. But if people don't have the trust in law enforcement, then, you know, it's going to be very hard to deal with these issues and for people to actually call when they, when they feel like they, they're in a difficult situation or they're afraid that someone is having a mental health episode, but they, they don't want that person to be, you know, abused by the police. So that's something we have to think about and we have to address that on a wider level as well.
Thanks. Brian?
I think one of the biggest challenges with mental health is the servicing for it. If you do not have health insurance or insurance that will cover it, it's not cheap. And there is not, somebody shouldn't have to be arrested to get minimal service at the jail, you know, might. the jail, you know, might provide them. I think there needs to be, I would put money into having a centralized place where hire some professionals, because yes, there are not, like Anhao said, there are not very many mental health professionals that are available for everybody. It's not easy to find, they're not easy to schedule. I think just expanding that would be the biggest issue that I would, or the biggest thing that I would do to kind of help with having more places that people can go if they feel that they need some, something with their mental health. There needs to be a place for them to go, that they don't have to dig through and call through their insurance to find, you know, a place for them to go.
Thanks. Monica?
I would use those public safety dollars to allocate for treating mental health treatment and accessibility. I went to a recent, though, I was going to say recent county council meeting, but it was pre-COVID time, and I was really surprised and impressed to learn that the county actually invests in Valley Oaks Health a considerable amount of money, which I wasn't aware of. And I know personally, for, for myself and my family, I've reached out to Valley Oaks Health to get services and have been denied, not because we didn't have insurance, but because they didn't have enough staff, they don't have enough capacity. So that was, that was an eye-opener. So, but I think there are resources in the community that we can leverage, so that we don't duplicate services. I think that by leveraging those resources, we can make our community stronger. But there's, we definitely need to fund programs, particularly with the community corrections. We need to fund diversionary programs. We need to fund programs that will give those inmates the tools and the tools so that they don't go back to, get involved in the criminal system again.
Thanks. Susan?
This is a huge problem. We have lots of people, you know, huge percentage of us will experience mental health problems personally or in our families. I think being, developing a community understanding and engagement in thinking about this, and that's where, where I think if we can shift to a, shift to a, a priorities-based community engagement, where we can, we can raise our, our understanding and compassion for substance abuse and mental health issues. Many times, mental health issues are self-medicated for, with, with substances that then get people in trouble. I can't imagine having schizophrenia and ending up in jail, you know, having an unquiet mind and being in such a kind of difficult place to be, even if you are sane, one of the few of us who are sane. But I would go with outcomes-based programs, because we really need to approach this, because it is such a, a problem that is, is woven into our culture. We need to approach this with science and with looking at what are our goals, what are the outcomes, and then, and then constantly tweaking to improve ours and be more successful.
Thank you. So I'm looking at her time, and I'm looking at the questions, and so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to have two more questions that we have from there, and then I'll let everyone have the closing statements. I just want to make sure that we're respecting people's time, respecting the candidates' time. So if you don't hear your answer, or your question answered, I will, I'll go out on a limb and say, please reach out to the candidates, and I'm sure that they will provide an answer for you. And we're sorry we can't keep this going all night. I'm sure it would be a party, but people, people have things to do, I'm sure. So our next question is from Sheila, and it's, "How can we raise our voices to overturn the wind farm ban?" And I'll, I'll actually modify it slightly and say, "Do you support," or I guess, your support for the wind farm ban, yes or no, and then, and then add that. And I will start with Margaret.
Oh yeah, so to answer the question, yeah, I would support overturning that ban. I was quite perplexed when I saw that decision, because I felt the county in other ways had been, you know, seemed more amenable to those kinds of solutions, but apparently, this was one thing they didn't support. I think we can raise our voices in lots of ways. I'm really happy to see the action that's happening on the city levels, like West Lafayette with their climate resolution, and Lafayette now working on a resolution. And I think that that gives us momentum to push at the county level. But it will require, you know, listening to communities, explaining the issue, getting input from people, raising, you know, raising the question and people's awareness, and getting a public comment, and some, maybe some creative actions from, from activists to, to really get that issue back on the table.
Thanks. Susan?
Yeah, I know that the climate strikers have prioritized overturning the wind farm ban, so, so we could look for their help. I, I can understand that setbacks from certain corridors might be the, a solution, but I think it was ham-handed to put the whole county off limits. So, to revisit that, Westside voted against the ban. The Perry Brown voted against it on the Lafayette Council, and I believe four people voted against it on the APC, one of those being Lisa Dullum. Thank you, Lisa. So I think this is, is not, this is not supported by most of the people in the public. In fact, I think most people are concerned about climate change and, and were, were curious about this. I myself, this is one of the few cases where I'm a conspiracy theory theorist. I believe that there was fossil fuel money behind promoting this wind ban. So this is one place where we can, we can show democracy in action, and we can change this.
Thanks. Monica?
Thanks, Sheila, for the, for the question. I don't support the wind farm ban. I think we have to be proactive in addressing our climate crisis. I think it was very short-sighted to, to ban wind farms. I've worked in a, but I would describe a very conservative county and white county, and they have lots of wind turbines. So that, I was, I was perplexed when Tippecanoe County rejected wind farms. As far as engaging more voices, I would connect with the grassroots activism that already exists, like the climate strikers that Susan referenced. They're very active, and, and they're young and motivated. I think we need to support them and encourage a groundswell of voices clamoring for the same thing, which is, we want to address climate change.
Thanks. Brian?
Yeah, I'm on the same boat as everybody else. Yes, I do not support the wind, wind farm or turbine ban. Out at my school in Mentani, back in 2010, we have a turbine that went up. It's not as big as the ones up in Benton County, but we were learning from it. We, the students were actively engaged in this, and so I believe it kind of came out of left field. I was not expecting it. I mean, I'm not sure where it came from, and who's, you know, behind it, but yeah, that was very unusual. And yes, I believe that in order to, with overturning it, is to just have people talking about it, have the climate strike, that the students come, make, making noise at the, with the commissioner meetings, with the county council meetings, and so, doing it so they get that our voices are heard with the news, and not just that they were, you know, striking like they have been, but reasons why they were striking. And I believe maybe just going, you know, towards the commissioners might be a way to kind of get that message out there, because yeah, I don't know too many people that are in favor of an entire county ban on wind farms. I understand sections might need to be, you know, banned in those sections, but not out here in Southern Tippecanoe, it is windier than windy, and there's plenty of land that wind farm could go on if the, if the, you know, power gets put back into the city and not like Benton County. I know it gets shipped up to Michigan and up to Canada, a lot of that, the farms. So we have to make sure it would stay in the county, but yes, definitely do not support the wind farm ban.
Thanks. Anhao?
Yeah, I guess I'll start right by saying that campaigns to try to overturn things, and just almost everything in a democratic society, is a multifaceted approach. So I would say that the first thing that we have to do is, we have two candidates, we have two county commissioners that are up for election, and that we need to elect people that reflect our values more, that aren't going to be voting in favor of the wind farm. So that, that's a one step that we can be taking, right? But obviously, you know, that, that takes work and whatnot, so, but that's something that's really important. We need candidates that reflect our values. But in addition to that, I think that people reference the climate strikers, and I think that's something that's really important, right? We have a groundswell of support, especially among younger people in our community. It's an issue that affects them. It's an issue that's going to affect them for the rest of our lives. If we're moving in a direction that is consistent with the need to address the climate change crisis, then we'll be able to tackle it, and it starts with the local area. So I would support, you know, I support them, but I also think that we need to be doing more activism work, you know? We have an election. Let people know that there is a wind turbine farm ban. Most people won't know that in the county. Make it an election issue. Amass, text people. If we're able to canvass, canvass, knock on doors, talk about it, talk about why it got blocked, why it needs to be reversed, put pressure on the people that are in elected office. And then also, different commissions, like you mentioned, the Area Planning Commission, the APC, we need to put people in those commissions that reflect the values of the community, that can push back. We need to make sure that we're holding our government accountable, and that we are making it easier for people to know what's going on. Because if people don't know that there's a ban, that's not going to make them vote differently, and that's not going to put pressure on the commissioners to change it and overturn it. So, yeah.
Thank you. And this will be our, our last question, and again, I want to apologize that we couldn't get to more questions. There were some really good ones in here, and, and I encourage you to, to ask those and post on those people's campaign pages, so that people can know where they stand on that. So our last question, and I think it ties into a lot of what we've been talking about, because it seems like mental health is, is like a big issue that people have on their mind. I agree, it's on my mind, too. So this comes from Matt, Different Matt. "With the concern over mental health and the lack of service available for those persons caught up in the criminal justice system, would you be willing to direct money from a mental health court to address mental health issues as part of probation?" Does I, that was a long one? Does anyone need me to repeat it, or are we good? We're all good? Okay, cool. So we'll start-
Okay, repeat it, Matt.
Oh, okay, sorry. Different thumbs up.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
"With the concern over mental health and the lack of service available for those persons caught up in the criminal justice system, would you be willing to direct money for a mental health court to address mental health issues as part of probation?" And let's start with Anhao.
Um, yeah, sorry, when you first read it, I thought you said "from a mental health court," and I didn't know that we had one. But yes, I think that we do need to have a, a mental health court. I think that we need to be addressing it as part of our probation process. I think that we need money in that direction. It can't be the only thing we do, though. I, I do want to be clear, right, that in situations like this, putting people through the process and then putting them, you know, on probation, on parole, you know, we don't want people to have a record if we can do that, right? Like, we want to address this in a way that people don't lose access to benefits. So yeah, if, I'm all for something like a probation system, where we, we don't actually, you know, your record gets expunged at the end of you completing this process, because one area that our community and other communities have struggled with for many, many years is that people go through the process, they're incarcerated, even if they get better, then they lose access to the benefits that they need to be able to get their lives on track. So I'm all for programs that are diversionary and are trying to actually address the root cause of the issue, rather than trying to jail our way out of it. So, so yeah, I think that Matt's suggestion is a good one. We want to make sure that we have a mental health, a mental, mental health court and putting money into probation to address that in our community, rather than incarcerating it. So, yeah.
Thanks. Brian?
I'll make mine fast, that, yes, that is a fabulous idea, one that I'm surprised that, you know, we don't have already. That could be a simple, a simple step before, or even after, to, to, that would put the help in the hands of the people that need it, you know, the most. And so yes, I'm just going to cut off there, rather than rambling on and on and say why yes, but yes, that is an excellent idea.
Great. Susan?
Yes.
Easy enough. Monica?
Well, it probably won't be a surprise, but yes, I would also support a mental health court as an alternative. I think if, if we want to change outcomes for those who get caught up in the criminal justice system, then we have to give them the support and tools that they need. And mental health isn't, you know, an overnight fix-it thing. It usually affects people long-term, even a lifetime, and you need to have the resources to be able to, to manage a mental health issue.
Margaret?
Actually, I'm going to go against the grain a little bit. I think that I would need more research on this issue, because as an alternative to incarceration, yes, definitely. And if we can provide resources that, that would support people through that process, then definitely. But I also know that being on probation can be stressful in itself, and, you know, if you are, you have to do drug testing sometimes, you have to call every day to see if it's your day to be tested. And I'm, I would be concerned that, that it could be done the wrong way. You might be putting additional burdens on people who are already burdened. And we don't want to create a situation where the, you know, dealing with the, the requirements of the probation are, you know, stressful and affecting people's mental health when we're trying to help them address their mental health. So I think I would need to do some more research on, on this particular issue, but I would love to hear more from people who are more knowledgeable about this, this issue, where it's been tried and, and how it works. So I look forward to learning more about that.
I want to say thanks, everybody, for your questions. Thank you for participating. I'm going to give everybody their closing statements, and I'm going to come back with a little bit more information. To start this out, though, let's go with- Uh, to start this out though, let's go with Margaret for your closing statement.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for this opportunity. It was really great to be here with these, uh, you know, fabulous candidates. I think the, the fact that we have so many candidates, um, shows the interest both on the Republican and Democrat side. And, um, that it's, there's a groundswell of people who are interested in our public office, but also know that things need to change in our county. Um, and just to, you know, to emphasize what I said before, the things that I really care about are accountability and creating a compassionate and inclusive community and, um, making county government accessible and transparent. Um, and in some ways that means changing not only, uh, the decisions and the priorities of the council, but also the processes that the council has. And that means making things more accessible, um, considering the full range of people in the community and recognizing that our county is changing and we need to change along with it. And to make that progressive, the direction, you know, I, I hope to, to have your vote. Thank you.
Thanks. Anhel?
Yeah, um, I think, you know, when, uh, uh, obviously, uh, I, I want to start actually by saying, uh, that I am really grateful to be here, uh, Margaret, Monica, Susan, Brian. I think we have a really good primary field and, uh, just, uh, I, I am amazed with the quality of the candidates and the ideas that we're pushing for. I think that you probably heard that, uh, we might have differences of degrees in what our first priority is, but really pushing for similar issues and trying to make our county better. And I think that that's, uh, what unites us and that's what I'm focused on. I want to make sure that we're making a county better for, uh, people, uh, to make sure that people have a better future, that, uh, middle-class and working-class people and families are actually able to thrive and succeed in our county. So, um, I, I think that we need to be more proactive to make sure that that happens. We want to be looking five years down the line, 10 years down the line. What do the programs that we're funding, what, what impact do they have on our community? How are they going to make it better? Um, a lot of people might say, you know, in a time like this, we can't be looking at adding new programs. Everything has to be paying attention to the crisis. Uh, yes, we need to pay attention to the crisis. But if we let go of the pro- problem that we know we need to address, 10 years down the line, when we're back to normal and everything's fine and dandy, those issues are still going to be there. They're still going to be impacting our communities and they need to be addressed now, not, not 10 years from now. Because a lot of lives are going to be affected in the meantime, especially by criminal justice issues. Um, but that's just that, climate change is a, is a growing threat. And we want to make sure that our county is on the leading edge here in Indiana rather than trailing behind. As, as we mentioned, even smaller counties and more rural counties that, uh, don't tend to be as progressive as us. So as us, so we want to be moving in that direction. Um, so I'm grateful to be here. I think representation matters and, uh, uh, we, I want to make sure that our communities are represented, uh, that there is, uh, uh, young people, Latino people, people of color, more women, uh, in our local government. So, uh, that's why I'm running.
Thanks. Monica?
I want to thank Greater Lafayette Indivisible for hosting us. Um, this is very important to me. It has been difficult to campaign as you can imagine. I do ask for your vote. If we're talking about a progressive vision and we want to see it realized, then we need to elect progressive candidates. We need to elect candidates that reflect our values and who are representative of the community they serve. We need to see more women, more people of color. And I think I have a good combination of life experience, life experience and professional skills that make, that will make me an asset to the county, to county council. Thank you.
Thanks. Brian?
Okay. Um, again, I'll, I will parrot what everyone has said before me. I'll thank you to, um, Lafayette Indivisible for hosting our forum. And thank you to the five, um, Democrat, or the four, I guess, uh, other Democratic, um, nominees, um, for, you know, for showing up tonight. That's for county government is about showing up, is about showing that you care. And all six of us on Democratic side, I can say we all care about, you know, Tippecanoe County. Like Anhel said, we might have different, maybe number one on what's most important to us. But through and through, we are all looking to improve our county and that's why we are running. That's why I am running personally. Um, there needs to be some, there needs to be people on, um, the county council to make sure that our tax dollars are spent. If they, if we're taxing people, there's no point into just tucking them away in a rainy day fund and maybe use it 10 years down the road. Cause right now I'm pretty sure that a vast majority of people in Tippecanoe County would like their, you know, the taxes that were taken from them, you know, back to, uh, you know, spend now rather than just having it in the, you know, six, $7 million rainy day fund tucked away. So we need more accountability. We need more transparency. Um, that's some, that I, you know, am 100% for. And, you know, if I get a chance to be on the county council, that's what I will be, uh, pushing for.
Thanks, Brian. And Susan?
Okay. So this opportunity to, for the council candidates to engage with voters, to share the challenges we see and the solutions we propose, this is what democracy should look like. Uh, but we also must ensure accessible, secure, verifiable voting for all citizens. That's the foundation of our democracy. A couple of points we didn't have time to address, zoning and development. The council plays a role in zoning. Our current zoning allowed development of low-income housing on 231. It's isolated without public transportation or sidewalks. So the costs of the appropriate services will fall to taxpayers. I think we need to do smart development that balances the cost of new services with the projected tax revenues. Uh, on roads, maintaining bridges and county roads will be challenging as the taxes collected, um, have, will be lower based on the COVID crisis. Um, increased flooding and freeze thaw associated with climate change will exacerbate maintenance challenges. I support evaluation and prioritization of bridge and road maintenance to support transportation and development. My experience with community and community involvement with Greater Lafayette chapter of the ACLU of Indiana with historic preservation, bicycle advocacy, as a court-appointed child advocate, business owner and Purdue retiree who worked with a program that delivered information to the public will inform my decisions on county spending and I ask you for your vote.
I want to say thanks to every single person who, um, who came tonight, all the candidates, Susan, Anhel, Brian, Margaret and Monica. Uh, I also want to thank people you, you didn't see. We have some people behind the scenes. Becky for keeping time, Lisa for making sure all the questions were, were wrangled and everything. Cause that's, that's a lot of manual labor. This is definitely not just me. It takes the whole group, even people who weren't on the call. Uh, everyone at Greater Lafayette Indivisible, everybody in the Working Hoosiers Vote Coalition. Um, I want to say that I want to thank everyone watching for joining us. One request, if you like this, let us know. And if you have suggestions or changes, let us know too. Our email is email@lafayetteindivisible.com. You can talk to us on our Facebook page, on our Twitter page, on our Instagram. We're, we're everywhere and we want to hear you. We want to get you involved. So that's, that's it for me. Uh, I've been Matt Guyer, your moderator, and I hope everyone has a great night.